Whatever your heart desires, or later on, if we do talk about a certain subject under underneath business such as proclamations, the adult probation services agreement, professional services, skillings, or lodging tax recommendations, you can speak or address the council after that, after the council has an opportunity to speak, and then the public will as well. Just raise your hand and I'll call any as soon as I see it. All right, so first, we got two blue cards, Ron Thomas.
Would you like me to?
Please, yeah, please stand at the podium and.
I'm Ron Thomas, president of Thomas Architecture Studios in Olympia, Washington. I'm here on behalf of some local Yelm property owners. We're a firm that designs a lot of mixed-use multifamily projects in urban environments. We have a few thousand units that we've designed over the last 10 years, many of which are in downtown Olympia and other communities throughout the sound area. It's unique, and I'm glad to see that people are starting to be interested in this topic in Yelm, and to do so would necessitate some changes in the current land use code. I'm just here to support the idea of those changes, be they height, parking. There's many others that issues that need to be addressed. I'm here just to encourage you to consider those in the coming weeks and months. Hopefully, there's a spot on your agenda in the coming weeks. I'd like to come back and show you some examples of the work we've done and how that might apply to the city of Yelm, because it's a big change. And I do recognize that body, want to encourage you, it can be done and done very, very well. And this is one of the most sustainable things we can possibly do in our urban environments, giving people a chance to literally live in an environment where they can walk to work, an environment where you're not building any new roads or utilities, where we can actually get an entire building to be much more energy efficient than all of those units that were separated into smaller, single families or townhomes, that type of thing. So its time has come, I do believe, for the city of Yelm, and I'm just here again as a proponent for this and would like to be a resource as you deliberate this in the weeks and months ahead. So thank you for the chance to speak.
Any questions, comments?
Example?
Example, downtown, are you asking for project examples?
Yeah, why you talking a little bit more info, where you looking to open to do with Yelm?
Sure, so in Yelm, we're interested in more urban mixed-use housing, so something that would have commercial on its base, retail shops, maybe some offices, preferably parking that is screened from the main street, buildings that are brought up to the sidewalk edge. Now, I'm being a little literal here, but they might be set back 10 feet or so from the sidewalk edge, might have restaurants down below, and then you would have apartment flats above that. So I'm talking about elevator access buildings, parking in the rear, might tuck under part of the building, given the size of the site in particular that we're looking at. And the way these projects become successful is you need to get enough height to maximize your housing. Commercial, it's hard to get enough return on that in a city like this to substantiate the cost of new construction. But when it comes to retail, that's where it starts to make, I'm sorry, I said retail, residential, that's when it starts to make sense. So two-bedroom, one-bedroom studio-type units, preferably you would have four floors or four floors of that minimum over commercial. So that's the type of project that I'm talking about.
Yeah.
And those type of heights, they would get up to about 60 feet. Each floor of a residential multifamily, preferably it's about 10 feet floor to floor. Round floor wants to be roughly 16 to 18 feet tall. You have enough for a good storefront canopy and then a clear story window above. That's more of a neo-traditional approach, something that worked very well for Yelm. So that's, yeah, little example.
If you'd like to tell us what site you're looking into?
Sure. Steve's my client, so 403 West Yelm. It's of substance, it's of enough substance in size in order to do this right. It's 120 feet deep, so the building wants to be 60 to 70 feet deep. That'll allow for parking behind screen from the main drive. It's 200 feet long, so now you're starting to get enough in terms of density. The numbers start, I should have mentioned that I am an architect who a lot of these, but I'm also an investor in a lot of these projects, so I'm very mindful of what it takes to build these.
Thank you.
Very much.
Any other questions, council? Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to our next comment. Tim?
Don't make this about you, okay?
Tim, would you please come up, sorry?
Thank you. So I'm just here to talk a little bit about how our city looks as you drive through. In this little pamphlet I made here, there's a few things on the left side that I'd like to talk about a little bit. First of all, I guess the questions that I have, and Cody might be able to answer a lot of these, is what is the city's responsibility for maintaining roads, sidewalks, as you drive through town? What are we doing? What's the, you know, what? I couldn't find anything in the municipal code on what, you know, responsibilities were of public works for the city to maintain that stuff. So I don't know if there is, and I just couldn't find it. But if you look through a lot of these photos that I have on the right-hand side here, I don't think our city looks as great as it should when you drive through. And what brings people to town and what people want to see when they move here is a clean, nice-looking city that is well-maintained, right? And part of that is our curb appeal and landscaping, whether it's sidewalks, curb and gutter, streets, our bike paths, everything that you might see in these pictures that I took over the last week. So Cody, are you able to speak anything on that?
I can't, do you want to go through everything? First, you want me to hit as you go?
Well, no, you can just, just kind of this stuff here, I guess.
Tim, this is, I mean, this isn't for public comments, good questions. Happy to answer some of these pretty briefly, but we got a piece of a size agenda. If you want to, I know we can address a lot of these pretty quickly, too. But please, yeah, just touch on briefly which ones you want, some quick answers on.
Well, mostly it's our curb and gutters as you're driving through town. I mean, we have, I see, you know, people out there mowing with push mowers, you know, taking a really long time doing their job versus, you know, being on a, you know, self-propelled stand-on machine that, you know, is four and a half times more efficient than a push mower is. I know they're expensive, and those things, you know, we have to think about, but we also have to think about, you know, the additional employees that it takes to maintain the city's appearance. And I think that we're failing on making our city, you know, cleaner. I mean, Josh and Lynn put on that, you know, Pretty City Day, and that was great. We cleaned up a lot of stuff, but this is just ongoing stuff that, since living here for the last four years, I've never seen extra changed. So this is something that I wanted to bring up, so we could start a discussion on whose responsibility it is. Is it the, you know, are businesses required to maintain things that aren't getting maintained? Is the city required to do, you know, these items versus the businesses? And, you know, how do we go about getting the businesses to maintain properties that aren't being maintained as well? So, but these are, and a lot of the stuff we can look at later, I just, these are just things that were on my mind, and wanted to kind of hear what the council's take was on it.
Questions, comments from the council?
I agree. I asked Cody, last meeting was it, about the street sweeper, and that we need the street sweep. Well, our street sweeper is broken down, and we're waiting on a new one. But I agree with you.
That's how we're right.
I think that you have a lot of really good information in here, and it's good to see these pictures, because I don't see everything when I'm driving through town. I'm very focused on the road in front of me, so as not to hit anything. But I think that a lot of this could be easily hit in council initiatives.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilor Kaminsky?
Well, when I started my beautification initiative, I had several conversations with Cody, and we had pressure washing, we had all sorts of things on the list of things to do, but Public Works is very busy. And yes, you can definitely see this, and so I think it's perfect that a resident has come forward and said, hey, what about weeds and whatnot? So thank you for coming forward, it just adds more fire to the fuel.
Councilor Richardson?
Thanks, Tim, for taking these pictures, because I think a lot of us in our routine of our day, we just get in our car, try not to get wet from the rain, and then unless you're walking, actually walking, you don't see that. And so these are recent pictures you just taken, and so thank you for that. Because I think a lot of us, we have to slow down and look around and acknowledge these things, because we don't know them unless somebody brings them up, but I'm guilty of just go-go-going.
Yeah.
Because I'm looking at these pictures, and I'm like, I know where that's at, whoa, I didn't know it was that bad.
Well, and we have a lot of, just in the back here, and everybody knows all the upcoming events we have here, but just even the Seattle, the Portland Bike Ride on July 16th, if you look at our bike lanes going through town, they're all coming through here. I mean, that's, that's kind of unacceptable, if you think about it. So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I, real quick, I apologize, because I'm doing this from home, so I'm not there to ask, but if I could get Tim's first and his last name, I have his first name, but I didn't catch his last name for the record.
Tim, how do you pronounce your last name, I'm sorry?
Bob Lits.
I've got it, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And we are addressing a lot of those, we may take care of some of these immediately in the next, you know, couple of weeks, I'm assuming?
Yes, so just, I don't want to, no, I'm obviously not going to make excuses. Some of these are WASDOT, as you know, like in the state highway, and it, like the yellow median here that's broken, the big four, the changeover over by Rite Aid, that we can't, we can touch it, we can hit it, but then WASDOT comes out and always says, hey, you touched our thing and hit it, you need to fix this now, because you messed it up. And we're like, thanks, no good deed goes unpunished. And then some of the other ones, yes, is street sweeper issues, and we're, you know, down people, but it needs to be addressed, and we'll get there.
Yeah, and that's why I put in there that I didn't know whose responsibility it was necessarily, because I know that it is a highway coming through, and I didn't know whose responsibility was what. But it's also important, because there's all sorts of things that we, and I heard it earlier today from GNI, that, you know, we'll call to get a street light fixed, and we know it's not, City of Yelm doesn't do that, but it's PSC's responsibility to do it, but we have to continue to follow up PSC to get it done. There was another example in there, and Cody will know about it, but we have to stay on these people to get these things done, because some of them are safety issues. Guys can take a look at the one we have there that we've been trying to work on since last year that hasn't been.
Thank you, Tim, and we are going to be budgeting for some new equipment as well. You made a good point about the mowers and all that, so we are trying to be efficient. All right, moving on, Ashley, did you want to speak as well?
I didn't see those.
Yeah, no worries, I know you emailed, so please, come on up.
Great, thanks.
You'll state your first and last name for the record.
Ashley Lee Brooks. Good evening, members of the council and my community. My name is Ashley Lee Brooks. I am a leader, volunteer, and legal gun owner. Amid a recent spate of horrific mass shootings at a Buffalo supermarket, a Texas elementary school, and a Tulsa hospital, it feels like little has changed. In fact, things have gotten worse. Mass shootings are more frequent and deadlier than ever. It's hard not to feel numb. When comparable nations have suffered deadly mass shootings, they respond with new laws, curtailing firearm access, and they rarely experience another mass shooting. In America, we wait for decisive action that never comes while mass shootings continue unabated. There are things we can do right here, right now, as individual citizens, to stop a mass shooting before it ever starts. It begins with a shift in mindset. Mass shooters are not them, they're us, boys and men we know, our children, our students, our colleagues, our community. This fact may make mass shooters seem harder to stop. The reality is quite the opposite. Happy ball mass shooters, nearly 80% of school mass shooters communicate with intent to do harm ahead of time. They post threats on social media or tell their family and friends in person, this is a crucial opportunity for intervention. But many people don't know what to do with that information or where and how to report it. By training ourselves to say something if we see or hear something that gives us pause, and by lobbying for behavioral intervention and threat assessment teams in our schools and workplaces, communities can proactively respond to these warning signs long before prospective shooter ever picks up a gun. The problems in the lives of mass shooters feel so massive and overwhelming, but sometimes it's the smallest thing that can get someone through a moment. In a popular TED Talk, Aaron Stark describes being diverted from the pathway to violence by a blueberry peach pie. He was days away from perpetrating a school shooting, but a simple act of kindness, a homemade pie, reminded him that there was still good in the world and saved his life. Likewise, if people can't get their hands on the easiest tools to harm themselves or others, there will be fewer tragedies. Most school shooters get their guns from home, which means parents of school-aged children can prevent death simply by locking up their firearms. This brings me to my suggestion. I would like the city of Yelm to recognize the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, a day where we commit to reducing gun violence and pledge to do all we can to encourage responsible gun ownership, to help keep our children safe. The lights on the issue can't get any brighter. Thank you for your time.
Questions, comments from council? That's where Richardson?
I really appreciate the email. I read the Woodinville proclamation, really, I think, made the most sense. And I don't know if you can explain to everybody about the orange?
Oh, wear orange, yes, I brought the proposal I sent to each of you with me. So Gun Violence Awareness Day is also known as Wear Orange, and it was started in 2015 to commemorate a high school student from Chicago who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade. One week later, she was shot and killed on a playground back in Chicago. The idea to wear orange was inspired by a group of her friends, because hunters wear orange, to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and also, orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. So that's how it got started.
Councilor Crossman?
I like how you started really well, the intent intervention, that's what we need more of, because it's not this kind of violence, suicide is, that's an operate right now, drug use, the number one killer of men is drug overdose. So the, whatever tool is used is not a problem, it's before that, it's catching that problem before it happens. We're taking no life for your own life. That's where our focus needs to be, and really, why are we having these issues? Because guns have become more restrictive over the years. I mean, these high-power weapons have been around for over 100 years, but they, the intense, the increased amount is more now, but also the drug use is more, the suicide is more. What is causing all these issues? That's where we need to focus on, and like you said, we need to be more involved in people's lives and catch that, and be nicer to people. You know, like you said, like that blueberry, sometimes that's all it is. Blueberry peach pie is this, if you see somebody that not looking, acting right, just reach out and say, hey, give them a smile, get something to eat, and that's, that's, those simple acts of kindness go a long way, and I think that's, will do a lot more than focusing on whatever that individual chooses to use to take life.
Thank you, Councilman Crossman, I do agree with that there, and my focus after this is more on gun sense as it comes to safety inside our homes, because it starts there, if they're getting their guns from a household. So I would like to focus on just making sure that responsible owners are keeping their guns away responsibly. I don't want to take anything from anybody, I just want to add to it.
Any other questions, comments, council? Thank you very much, Ashley.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any, anyone else that wants to speak that didn't call it a blue speakers forum? Ready? Moving on to the consent agenda, item number five. We have our April 2022 check register and budget position report, as well as our May 24th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Regular approval of the consent agenda motion?
To approve the consent agenda.
Crossman, seconded by Councilor Roy. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any in favor, or any opposed, say nay? I'm curious, we have a consent agenda, thank you, council. Moving on to item number six, new business under A, we have a mayoral proclamation. And just kind of briefly about proclamations, a proclamation is an official announcement issued by the mayor to recognize a day, week, or month that are matters of local, regional, or national concern. The goal of a proclamation is to honor, celebrate, or create awareness of event, special occasion, cause, or significant issues. You can go ahead and read the proclamation for the month of June, and if there's questions or comments from the council, we'll take it at that point, and then if there's any from the crowd, do that after the council. All right, City of Yelm mayoral proclamation, Pride Month. Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots, which occurred in June 1969, are generally recognized as a catalyst of the LGBT movement. And whereas every individual is equal before and under the law, and has a right to equal protection and equal benefit of the law without discrimination based on race, national, ethnic, origin, color, religion, sex, age, or mental or physical disability. And whereas Yelm celebrates the history and diversity of our city's lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community, and promotes a society in which all residents can live free from discrimination. And whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to celebrate this harmony in which we coexist. And now, therefore, it is resolved that I, Jodecano, mayor of the city of Yelm, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Yelm, and encourage everyone to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists, respects the right of all people, and to celebrate the great diversity of our people. Sign on this, sign in the city of Yelm, Washington, this 14th day of June 2022. Questions, comments from the council? Councilor Richardson?
Yeah, I was looking at this very carefully as well. I know that a lot of times with proclamations, you want to make sure language represents, you know, in a good way. And with the Pacific Islander Asian one, that was a little trickier, where I thought if you're going to have a proclamation, celebrate the culture, you know, talk about the people, where there was some language in there that snuck in about systemic injustice, and then there was words about violence. And I thought, well, if that's how I felt, I will have said that, but you know, so with the proclamation, and after overlooking this one, I'm all about coexisting. And so I didn't see anything that was in question to make me want to say this is a bad idea. My thing is, when proclamations come to play, I want to make sure that there's always free will. And within those proclamations, as long as nobody's telling me what to think, what to believe, I'm all about it. So.
Thank you. Councilor Smith?
And I, you said this in the beginning, and I just think it's important for the public to know, because I didn't know the process, but this is a mayoral proclamation, so just so the public is aware, it doesn't mean, it's not something that the council votes on, it doesn't mean we agree or disagree, and I'm only speaking for myself, but I just think it's important for the public to be aware of that.
Councilor Smith, Councilor Crossman?
I do have one issue with number one on your proclamation there. So does a mayor support violence as a method for a minority to get what they want?
Of course not.
Because you referenced point one, the reference of the Stonewall riots, which are based on legal police actions, the violence pursued, it commemorates that, those actions, instead of the due process. So that's my biggest of your proclamation that I'm against, because it's not 1969, this is 2022, we have methods of changing the system if we don't like it. And I don't support violence and rioting as one of those methods.
Councilor Crossman, Councilor Roy?
I respectfully disagree. There was historically unjust acts that precluded those riots, and as a citizen of Yelm and a very proud ally, I'm very happy to see us celebrating this diversity. You know, the movement was started as a riot by people who were tired of being treated like second-class citizens. Yelm is a vibrant and diverse community, and we need all of the people to feel valued, included, and seen. We need every individual to keep our community interesting, unique, and vibrant. And though we may not all share the same views, it's important to recognize that we are all different in our own ways, and those differences should be celebrated.
Councilor Roy? Any other further comments, concerns from the council? Anyone from the audience would like to speak out on this? All righty, moving on then. Sorry, did I miss someone?
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind me going to the podium, saying your name for the.
I don't have anything written, but.
No worries.
Yeah, my name's Bonnie Schwartz, I actually live in Roy, so I don't know if I can speak here.
You can speak, sure.
Do all of our business in Yelm. You know, you were talking about equality, well, everybody does have the equal right, but what we're talking about is taking certain people's rights above and making them special rights.
Thank you for your comment, ma'am. Any other further comments? All righty, moving on. Item number B under six, adult probation services agreement. This is a motion to authorize Mayor DePinto to approve and sign the Adult Probation Clerk Services Agreement, Cassandra, is it Bouvier?
Bouvier.
Bouvier, excuse me. And, and so Sonia is going to brief us on this, and there was some requested information regarding it, and I believe she has that, so please, Sonia.
Good evening, Mayor DePinto and council members. I come before you today with respect to approve the Adult Probation Services Agreement effective July 1, 2022 through July 1, 2023 with Cassandra Bouvier. Last year, with a public safety department grant awarded to us by the Nisqually Tribe, the court was able to implement for the very first time an adult probation services program to provide guidance and direction to the defendants to stay on track with court order applications such as their treatment, EHM, community service hours, and other classes or resources that can be available to them. Recidivism has decreased in those cases on probation by 65% since implementation. Before the probation services program was implemented, our non-compliance calendars varied between 15 to 20 cases per calendar, and currently, we only see four to five cases for non-compliance. This is obviously because of the assistance of our probation clerk. She is in constant communication with the defendants and with the agencies to make sure that those probation reports are getting filed and that they're staying on track. And so therefore, we don't see them in our calendars or committing more crimes as often, which is great. Our probation clerk currently monitors 264 cases, 36 of those are in active probation, and 228 of those inactive. The difference from the active ones is those are your most serious charges, like your domestic violence cases, your DUI cases, and things like that. And the 228 inactive, those are more of the driving while license suspended thefts, and those are mostly monitored for, say, a class, if they have to be in an hour class, and any new violations. So that's the difference between inactive to active. Before our probation clerk position came on board, the court staff did their best in monitoring this case compliances. This was hard at times because of other duties that obviously the court staff has. This was hard at times because of other duties that obviously, um, the court staff has. And so monitoring cases is a very time-consuming job, and it wasn't all there because we also process passport services. We have to get calendars ready for court files, court documents, et cetera. So this was, I think, a great addition to have for our court. This agreement before you is for a non-represented position for twenty hours a month and for a total of seven hundred dollars a month. Currently, there is no impact to the city's budget, um, because the defendants cover a hundred percent of those probation costs. Our city attorney, Brent Dilly, has reviewed and approved the document that you have before you. And so, uh, that's it. At this time, my proposed motion is to authorize Mayor DePinto to approve and sign the Adult Probation Clerk Services Agreement with Cassandra Bouvier.
Councilmember Roy?
I move to authorize Mayor DePinto to approve and sign the Adult Probation Clerk Services Agreement with Cassandra Bouvier.
Councilmember.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay. Councilmember Richardson, is there any discussion on this? Councilor Smith?
This is for a one, another one-year contract, just a one-year contract. That was it.
Any other questions?
And, uh, it's all paid for, sorry. It's all paid for in-house, uh, the court, the people pay.
The defendants, yes, they put on a.
They come out of the taxpayers.
That is correct.
Any further questions? Has the motion seconded? Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Carries.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sonia. Moving on to item C, Professional Services Agreement with Skillings. Design Engineering for Cochrane Park Phase Two. Some of the council's been briefed multiple times now, should be familiar. But just in case, Pat's here to talk about it, give us a little update, what's going on, what he wants. You got it.
Um, no, I just wanted to update the, uh, first of all, update council on what's, uh, has transpired out at Cochrane Park over the last few years. Many of you were here when we started this project. We're rebuilding Cochrane Park, and as you are no doubt aware, Cochrane Park's primary function is serves as the outfall for our water reclamation facility. It has a secondary function that serves as a park, but its primary function is the treatment and disposal of our water. The park is now twenty-three years old and has undergone some, uh, rather significant, uh, vegetation growth and is in dire need of repair and upgrades. We decided to split that reconstruction into two phases. As you might recall, we did phase one, the design and the construction of phase one was completed, uh, last year. Phase one included, uh, rebuilding a, uh, one of our wetland cells. It also included the reconstruction of the pedestrian bridge near the entrance of the park. It also hits landscaping upgrades, and we installed a new restroom facility at the park. These were all upgrades that were considered maintenance in nature and did not require approval, uh, by the Department of Ecology. The remainder of the improvements at the park, which they're all listed in your, uh, in your staff report there, will include conversion of one of the remaining wetland cells out there into a new rapid infiltration basin. Modifications of the remaining wetland cells and the fountain pond, there's several piping configurations, a lot of valve replacement, this type of thing, and enlargement of our two existing rapid infiltration basins. Why are we doing this? Because our long-term growth will be to increase the amount of flow that we send to Cochrane Park. We're currently sending, uh, fifty thousand gallons a day from our water reclamation facility out there to the park. Our desire is to design the park to be able to accommodate a five-fold increase. So we would be able to send five, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day. This will require approval from the Department of Ecology. This design will then be completed, submitted to Ecology for review and approval. And at that point, we will take the plan specifications, put them out for bids for reconstruction of phase two. So what you have before you tonight is a, uh, Professional Services Agreement with Skillings Incorporated. They're the original designer of Cochrane Park and completed phase one renovations to, uh, to complete the design for phase two. I have asked them, and they have provided a very, very detailed, uh, scope of work and outline of the man-hours required to complete the design, which are included in the Professional Services Agreement. I would be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, not only on the technical end of what we're proposing to do out at the park, but in, in the, for the agreement itself. So if there's any questions for me.
Just the council, Councilor Crossman?
Just a comment. My kids appreciate the park side of it. We always try to challenge them how many different types of ducks, birds, and other critters we can find while we're there.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Smith?
I was going to do a motion. Motion to authorize Mayor DePinto to sign a Professional Services Agreement with Skillings, Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of three hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty. I'm trying to see where the decimal is. For design engineering services for the phase two reconstruction for Cochrane Park.
Roy? Second, my Councilor Roy, is there any further discussion, my council? Is there any discussion from the public too? Sorry about that. All right. So motion seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Carries.
I might add too, just for your information, so you know, uh, the funds to pay for this are coming from the already existing budgeted, capital facilities fund, and, uh, there are no grants or moments involved in this, so this is already in the budget.
Thank you. All righty, moving on to, um, I M D, the twenty twenty-two lodging tax award recommendations. Kathy, are you doing this one, or am I?
Either way, I can do it if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay.
Kathy, please tell us about the LTAC.
Thank you. So the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met, um, first they met back in November of twenty twenty-one, and they allocated twelve thousand dollars to be awarded as grants for the twenty twenty-two budget. They did meet again in April and reviewed and discussed applications, and as you know, one application did come before you. We took that back at your suggestion. Um, we made, that was advertised more. That was put out on the Facebook page, the City of Yelm website, and also the Nisqually Valley News did an article on that process and the grant option availability. Applications were accepted through May thirty-first. The committee met again on June sixth, um, at a fully noticed public meeting. They reviewed and discussed the application to make the funding recommendations. And so what you have before you is a recommendation for the Chamber of Commerce barbecue rally for six thousand dollars. The Yelm Chamber of Commerce Nisqually Valley Home and Garden Show for five hundred dollars, and Yelm Jazz in the Park for fifteen hundred dollars. And there were two additional applications that were received. They were not recommended for awards because they did not meet the qualifications of a nonprofit or governmental agency, um, as we have currently outlined in our, um, rules that were set by the committee. So the committee does, will be meeting again later this year. They are going to review those rules, um, look at those and see what, you know, make sure they're meeting the RCW requirements. And they will, like I said, review those rules again, but that's, we have the eight thousand dollar total before for you, um, and council can approve the entire amount or decline the entire package. If you, if there's a, if there's a change, the entire package would have to go back to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, um, as a whole, and they would review that for the requirements again.
Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Kaminsky?
Well, thanks, Kathy. I just wanted to confirm that after these events, all the figures and facts go back to the count, the LTAC committee to confirm that everything was in order with them receiving the money, anything they had to qualify.
Yeah, Kathy, do you want to?
We do, and so after they went. Yes.
No, there's a delay.
They have thirty days. Sorry.
Kathy, just please explain the, um, what, what, uh, business or non-business, what a nonprofit has to, um, submit to the city or to who and all that, please.
Okay, thank you. So after the, after they hold their events, the applicants, they have to spend the money first. Um, and then they have thirty days to fill out a report that indicates the attendance at the events, um, how many people came from out of town. There's various methods for, um, determining that information, and then they have to submit receipts for the money that they spent for the approved allocations, and then we will issue a refund back to them. So they have to spend the money first. They do have to submit that requirement. At the end of the year, the city also has a requirement to submit to the state. We have, uh, reporting on all of these items that we've spent through the lodging tax funds. Um, and so the reports that these nonprofit groups submit to us gives us all the information that we need to turn around and, and do our reports at the end of the year.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kaminsky?
Does the hotel actually confirm the heads and beds, like by the number?
I don't know in the past if we have actually asked them, like, for each night. We can definitely get those, that information, you know, how busy they were on those nights, um, about spending the night. Part of it is to bring people from fifty miles or more, um, you know, outside of our community into our community. That's where the lodging tax, you know, the RCWs stipulate that the requirements are. We have to bring the people from fifty miles or more. So usually it's, there's got to, there has to be some kind of advertising or something outside the city to bring the people in. And so not everyone does spend the night in the motel, but we can definitely get the information from the motel as far as, you know, what their occupancy was that night versus a regular night.
Thank you, Kathy. And yes, they usually do record, um, they ask, um, during those events.
I thought the heads and beds was the number one requirement.
It's probably the biggest, yeah. I mean, um, anyway, Councilmember Roy?
That is one of the, on the, the final report, that is one of the things that they ask is how many actual people did you bring in?
Thank you, Councilmember Roy. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Kaminsky?
I wanted to move, uh, motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Award Recommendations in the amount of eight thousand dollars.
My Councilmember Smith, is there any additional comments, questions from the council? Councilmember Richardson?
Being for a conflict of interest, uh, when we, oh, yes, on this or no, I, I think because of my involvement with the chamber, I'm really, I'm, I'm.
That's fair. Let me think here. We, we need at least four members for a quorum. Um, I don't know if we're accused. Is it, I believe we're accused the same as just a no vote, uh, if they were accused, if they're present. Do you have an? I'm sure you'll answer, but as long as three members vote yes, because you have. Yeah, that's what I understand. Do Kathy?
Yes, that is correct. As long as we have a quorum of the people present, uh, we have the majority of the people present. That is, that is good.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. All right, any other additional questions, comments, then? Any, uh, additional comments, questions from the, um, area? All right. It's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Any abstained?
Abstained.
I guess that's me too.
Okay, motion carries with, um, Councilmember Crossman, Smith, and Kaminsky voting in favor. Thank you, council. And thank you for their, uh, refusal of yourselves. All right, moving on, uh, and me. Confirmation of appointments to the Yelm City of, or excuse me, to the City of Yelm Advisory Boards and Commissions. This would be a motion to confirm Mayor DePinto's appointments to the Planning Commission, Arts Commission, Parks Advisory Committee, Salary Commission, Tree Advisory Board, and Historic Commission. I am going to go ahead and read through the, um, through the actual people who have been, um, appointed by myself, um, and to each of the committees. And then, uh, we can go ahead and open it up to, um, questions or comments from council and the public. All right, for the Planning Commission, Carlos Perez, Robert Howard, Stephanie Dunn. Carlos Perez and Robert Howard are, um, have, are currently on the committee, but, or the commission, but they are, um, I'm reappointing them, just FYI. For the Arts Commission, Gary Arrope. The Parks Advisory Commission, Kyla Russell. For the Salary Commission, Ashley Brooks, who is in attendance this evening. For the Tree Advisory Board, Kathleen Auckland, Crystal Wilson, and Alex Sorenson. For the Historic Commission, Austin Gray. And if there's folks in here that are on, or, um, that I missed, um, please raise your hand that are in, present tonight. See, okay. All right, is there any questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Roy, is that a question?
I was going to move to confirm the aforementioned list of appointments to the Planning Commission, Arts Commission, the Parks Advisory Committee, Salary Commission, Tree Advisory Board, and Historic Commission.
Councilmember Roy?
Yeah.
Seconded by Councilmember Crossman. Any further discussion by the council? Any comments, questions from the public? Yes, Ashley?
Hi, thanks. I was just curious, does that mean that all of the commissions are filled, all the positions?
I believe they would be, yeah. I think this is all, everyone, I think we're actually fully staffed after this, yeah.
Fantastic, great.
Thank you. All right, it's been motion seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Moving right along, got a big agenda today. Moving on to old business, item seven, A, Resolution Number Sixty-Five. It's a motion to approve Resolution Sixty-Five, providing authorization to apply for and administer grant funds from the Recreation Conserv, Conservation Office, RCO. Cody, please tell us more about the RCO.
Yeah, so we talked about this last council meeting, we had a first reading, um, the new resolution, or the, the old resolutions in front of you again, there were some small language changes. Um, I got the project number, so that's updated on the resolution. Nothing else was changed besides just updating project number and the dates, because we had those now that we know what's going on. So it's the exact same resolution. There are several people in public, I believe they're here to talk and support, or maybe against, I don't know. So, um, I'll open it up if you guys have any questions about the grant or anything like that. I can tell you the grant we applied for is around one point five million. Um, this is to upgrade the bridge that crosses the Nisqually River, not the bridge for cars, the bridge for people. So that's that trestle, that's currently rail trestle, will turn into a pedestrian bridge and put a little bit stub out into the Pierce County area, which will get us almost all the way built out trail-wise to where we, we are, we, what we own, so, pretty cool.
Thanks, Cody. Any questions, comments from the council?
Will we get a matching grant or just a grant?
So we have, we do have a twenty percent match for this. So during your budgeting cycle, we'll be asking for that match amount. Um, right now, I'm working with the Park Foundation that you guys approved so intelligently, um, at the beginning of this year, and thank you for that. So they're going to help us get some matching funds that maybe don't come directly out of our coffers, which would be great, and, uh, I've been working with specifically, just want to give a huge shout out to Larry Levine, um, who's been really helping me with all the stuff too. And Rest of Park Foundation, specifically Larry's been really helpful, so.
Other questions, comments? Councilmember Richardson?
I was just going to make a motion.
Several public. There's probably a few people that want to, want to publicly first. Any other questions, comments from the council first? Anyone from the public would like to, um, test this or testify? Someone lying, all right. Kathy, would you, um, who's Larry, I'm guessing? Kathy, would you please elevate Larry Levine to a speaker status? Larry, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, sir?
You can.
Okay, well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Larry Levine, and I am speaking as a volunteer from the Park Foundation of Thurston County. And, um, we have been working very closely with, um, Cody, our, our team of folks to, uh, aid the City of Yelm in applying for this grant. Two years ago, the city applied for a grant to, um, essentially reach Pierce County, uh, with the trail, and they did a great job. Unfortunately, just funding ran out literally on Yelm's project, and they only received a portion of the funding from the RCO, which is a state agency that handles many recreation grants. So we're simply going back and asking for the remainder of the funding, and this project is just absolutely fabulous. It's, uh, going to provide a healthy, active recreation and mobility access for all ages and abilities and income levels. It's going to have connectivity with your SR. It's going to have connectivity with your SR five-ten alternate project that State DOT is working on. They have really great connectivity planned with the non-motorized trail on the south side of that roadway. It's going to provide a new route across the Nisqually River for folks who walk, bike and roll, and ride horses. And it's going to link two counties' trail systems and also be part of a cross-state trail, in Washington, and it is our goal and hope that that brings wallets on wheels, or, or however, however they arrive, to our small rural communities and help their economies. So thank you so much for your support, of the resolution and for applying this project and for Yelm's foresightedness in preserving this rail corridor. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your comments Larry, and thank you for your work on this project as well.
My pleasure, sir.
Are there any additional comments? Cody, do you know if there's? All right, all right, cool. All right, council, there's a motion, well, excuse me, it wasn't a motion. We're about to make a motion though, Councilmember Richardson, I believe.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Six Twenty-five, providing authorization to apply for and administer grant funds from the Recreation and Conservation Office.
My councilman Crossman, if there's any further discussion, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. All right, thank you council. All right, now move on to our updates. Department heads, Todd Stansel. Let's go with Chief Administrator today.
Would you introduce me as I'm sorry? Administrator, okay. All right, we'll take that. All right, council, mayor, a couple of updates. Obviously, parade day is a week and a half away, roughly. Kind of a, it's first time in what, three years we've had a parade? For the parade day, so kind of a big deal. So staff is busy getting ready to, to help make that happen, pull that parade off. And so, we'll, we'll swing with that. Our administrative services director, Lori Lucas, turned in her letter of resignation to the city last week. She will be in the city on August first, will be her last day. She's been with the city for fifteen years. And so, she is leaving to move closer to family, and, it's a great opportunity for her to move back to the area that she came from, and so she's very excited about that. Is leaving in very good terms with the city and just excited for the next chapter in her life. So August first will be her, last day with the city. So with that, we have a few openings in the city. We have the city administrator position is currently still open. We are now opening for an HR specialist position, to replace the loss, the vacancy that Lori will create when she leaves. We're still looking for a civil review engineer.
We're doing interviews now.
We're doing interviews now. And we, do we still have one seasonal?
Well, we've hired seasonally, we have one left.
We have one seasonal. Everybody needs a seasonal job. Pay as well, and it's a five month opening, right? Five months for that. And then, so yeah, so that's going on. We participated in the Cascadia Rising twenty-twenty-two, full-scale exercise today. Myself, Cody Colt and Rob Carlson, with Police Department, spent the day in Tumwater with the other cities going through tabletop exercise, on a recovery plan after a nine-point-oh Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake. And just let you know that Yelm fared pretty well in that particular tabletop. They left all the roads open through Yelm. They, they destroyed the rest of the county and left theirs open. It was like, we didn't need a tabletop for that, right? We knew, we knew what happens when that happens, so. Other than that, this is my last city council meeting, so, you all. And that's all we got, unless you have any questions for me?
Get to fill that application, you know?
Anything for me? I love to mow grass.
Only a five month stand.
All right, thank you.
All right, council member updates. Let's start with Councilmember Kaminsky.
Joe and I had our finance committee meeting, which was, short, sweet and brief and to the point, just discussing the, vouchers, sorry, vouchers. No, I had no other committee meetings, I did attend the chamber lunch today and the business awards, great job. Lynn and Joe was a beautiful lunch and lots of awards and, very nice to recognize members of our community. And I did go and attend the mock interviews at the high school, as you did, very rewarding experience to talk to our young people. And just help them along the way, and I sure wish they would have done that back when I was in high school, because it's a great thing to do for the kids. And then lastly, I was invited by the superintendent of schools to attend the Washington Association of School Administrators, dinner, which was very good, and they gave us a certificate of merit in recognition of outstanding, community leadership and service to education and to the young people of Washington. It was a certificate awarded to the Bounty for Families group in their supportive learners without limits at the high school, and in the school community. So that was a great honor, it was a very lovely.
I had a public safety meeting last week, Holly will give her update on that. Beyond that, we, now that summer is here in Yelm, starting, next weekend, there's an event every weekend here in Yelm until August, so you will not be bored. Just get out there and, and have some fun in our community, it's, there's a lot of stuff going on, lots to offer. And I just would like to give a congratulations to our graduating high school seniors here in Yelm. They'll be graduating Thursday, and then Rainier was last weekend, so congratulations to, to everyone and good luck on your futures.
Councilmember Smith?
I had a busy week. So on the twenty-eighth, I did attend the ribbon cutting for the fitness court. That was fun, and the first farmer's market, I am so glad that is back. On the first, I attended the T-COM meeting. The T-SER and the Thurston County Emergency Radio Network Project, it continues to progress. Starting on July sixteenth, there's going to be a new nine-eight-eight crisis hotline, it will be active. There was, Congress passed, a, an act in twenty-twenty, so, everybody needs to have this nine-eight-eight number by July sixteenth, active. On June sixth, a few of the people in the room, also, we attended the Thurston County Emergency Management Executive Seminar. And that was kind of fun, we had these, these scenarios that we had to, we got this amount of money and we had to decide what roads to keep open. I don't remember what we did with Yelm, but anyway, it was fun, it was a good exercise. Yeah, it was, it was a great way actually to network and just meet people too, it was, it was a good evening, that was, that was fun. On the seventh, I also took part in the freshman mock interviews, and that was very rewarding. On the seventh, they also had a public safety meeting with Rob Carlson, the new body camera system is going well. The two new officers that came out of the academy are in their second or third week of field training. I actually got to meet Joe over the weekend and had spent about an hour with him and talked at a car event, actually, and, really nice, really nice man. Looks they have a couple of conditional office, or offers out for two more officers. Effective July through December, the court proceedings will take place only once per month, and the passport services will increase to two full days per month. And on the eighth, I attended the Southeast Thurston Fire Authority Board Meeting. They pinned a new lieutenant, which was nice. And they voted and approved an additional full-time employee in twenty-twenty-two, and the beaver update. Terry gave me some, some information about a beaver rescue that I forwarded on to the citizen, and I haven't heard back, but, anyway, that's it.
Thank you for looking into that.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossman?
First, I want to acknowledge that's Flag Day, happy Flag Day, everybody. And then also acknowledge anybody here served the Army. Happy birthday, Army, today. I did not serve, but thank you all for your service, I did. And also want to say thank you to everybody that stayed here, to the whole meeting, not just for your one little point. It's awesome to see citizens hanging out and being involved in political process, that's fun and exciting, this is actually a very quick meeting today. And then one last thing you want to acknowledge, the new gym that opened in town, it's been great, I've been there for like two weeks, working on my Washington summer bod. I don't have to lose any of my shirts, it's Washington, you know, I can wear a hoodie and still look great. It's free, if you haven't heard, the membership is completely free, it's right over there, the city park.
Yeah, like, like Terry said, we attended our finance committee, and we had the approval of the minutes of May tenth and, discussion about the April twenty-twenty-two check register. Also, I went to a SWAC meeting last weekend, for those who SWAC, you know, all these acronyms, it's a Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And the biggest news is they are going to be closing that transfer station, you know where I always go, when you say I'm going to the dump, I'm going to take it through the dump. That location is going to be closing at some point, they're looking for a new location, it's going to be further down south, I believe. Yeah, I, I know, yeah, I don't know, but they're going to, I think they're going to try to get some information from some Yelmites and, find out where, where would be a good location for a transfer station, so they're, they're in the lookings for one. Also, oh, and the senior center. One liaison over there, and they're in the process of nominating some, some board members, and going through that process, I'm excited for the membership and, and who they got nominated, so that's looking well. Also had a good encounter today with a young police officer. Sometimes they just hang out in our parking lot at the church and I always talk with them, and so today was interesting because, everything just kind of came together and connected the dots, and he was asking me about a, a youth in the area that, that, he's like, you know this kid? And I was like, I don't know, boy, I do know. And then what was so cool about that conversation was, I said, I think he's, he's going to camp this summer, well, for Young Life, and then the, the officer said, well, let me know if he needs more money to pay his way, I'll, I'll sponsor him. And then it just made me right there, just want to give the police a raise, you know? It just makes me, again, we're a small community, we were a city, and, and that right there just kind of spoke volumes to me. Because it's, it's a big thing, it's a big thing to know each other and look out for each other, and to know that somebody over here wants to help someone else. And that individual could never know.
We have a great police force here in Yelm. Every single officer we have, and every best every single one. Really professional and.
I did go to the farmer's market this Saturday, and it's just such a pleasure to see people come and use our community center, more and more people every weekend. And I noticed there's a whole bunch of flowers planted over there, who did that? Was that public works or somebody? It looked just beautiful, it caught my eye on every vacant corner, I was like, that looks great, so. I hope we can continue that tradition, it's fantastic.
Good job, public services team. All right, is that it? Councilmember Richardson?
No, no, I was just pointing at Cody, pointing at.
I got, I got a couple of things, I'll be quick though. EWC meeting coming up next week. Is anyone else planning to attend? I know we had a couple inquiry, inquiries about it. He, or, or if you can't attend, or if you wanted to attend one, I don't believe most of it, I know, Paul, you have, or. Yeah, someone was by Zoom, I don't believe so, so, but they do record most of these, and they do put it up on the website afterwards. So you can probably watch it for free after, but, but I will need to do those. And it's also a good time to remind council that there is different certifications for municipal leaders. There's certificate of municipal leadership, and then there is advanced certificate of municipal leadership. As council member, I also did both, got those, it took me six years though to get that, so FYI. There's, and they're meant to be, to make you a better council member, understand the laws and your authority and responsibilities as a council member, and as mayor, so I would recommend them, they're very helpful. You need to find that all online. Other than that, kind of want to give a shout out to Thurston Regional Planning Council, Vina, who's the deputy director, she reached out, so I, at my Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting, they're talking about federal funding and allocating certain things, and, I kind of made a, I voted, I abstained actually from this, from this action item, which, it was to disperse certain federal funding to local municipalities through this group, which is through, so Thurston County gets federal money for different things, to hand out for different projects, this one in particular is for, local projects that have like transportation-related, transportation-related. So I brought up an issue that South County wasn't necessarily getting some, and, although we, we do have plenty of projects available, and Yelm's a small city, but we still, hustling city, we have a lot of things going on. So she messaged me, she called up Pat right after that meeting, and, Pat was able to find out more of our projects. Our law's been phased to, right by here by the golf course, and we're going to receive, and, and federal funding, additional six hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars, which would have been our local match here for the City of Yelm. So that extra, over six, over six hundred thousand dollars can be put into other local projects. So we will, we will back in other projects and keep funding other things, so thank you, Pat, for working on that.
For the remainder of the construction contract.
So it's fully funded and all. Thank you so much, Pat, and I did a lot of work to fill out the required paperwork to get us that, and so thank you for doing that as well, Pat. Other than that, whereas Todd already talked about city administrator positions, we are receiving applications for that process, for that position right now. And I will be involved in councils, I stated, there will be two council members, I believe Blair and Councilmember Smith on this one for us, and, yeah, we'll be moving through that, we'll wrap up, I think, around July or so, middle of July. And we are, part of the reason we waited this long as well was to make sure that we had enough money in our budget as well from our last administrator. It's not just, you know, the day they, they stop, it's also, you know, I think it's three months or so severance pay. Plus all the hourly wages, or hourly, like accrual for sick leave and all that stuff, the, some of that stuff can cash out. So it's a lot of that, that equates into months that they would normally be here, so we had to wait a certain time, so it doesn't impact the budget, and we actually were saving a little bit, so that's good. Other than that, we got our paving completed for the most part over at the park. They, they're still going to drive it.
Driving tomorrow morning.
Driving tomorrow morning, and yeah, it's, that's a huge upgrade that the council's approved, was it last year?
Maybe this year, this council is a budget amendment, yeah.
It was you guys that did that. Hot diggity, thank you council for doing that. I'm sure the citizens of Yelm appreciate that as well, as we upgrade our different facilities, and I was one of the major ones. So that's all I've got, good council meeting. Thank you for all the public, it's the biggest meeting in years, so thank you so much for being here, with your concerns, opinions.
Move to approve.
So move to approve for an extra two hours. Move to adjourn. Seconded by Councilmember Roy, all in favor say aye. You opposed say nay? We are adjourned.